I call this meeting to order the Union County Board of County Commissioners Thursday, January 21st, agenda meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly Chairman. Chairman Garretson? Chairman Granados?
Commissioner.
Commissioner, I don't think Commissioner.
Oh, Commissioner Granados. Commissioner Hudak?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leon?
Here.
Commissioner Palmary Mueded?
Here.
Commissioner Staton? Vice Chair Williams?
Here.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Present.
Chairman, you have seven commissioners present?
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can you please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act? Oh, wait, hold on. Please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag. We'll do that first.
Yes Chairman. Humbly we ask God to give her peace and the lover of charity to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. While we're starting our videos, can you read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
Yes Chairman. The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstances to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 with the office of the county clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another remote meeting of this Board of Commissioners. As our custom will begin to thank the members of the Union County community for all they're doing during this COVID-19 outbreak. We've made a lot of progress, but we must continue to guard against this virus. Let's all renew our commitment to protect one another during this time of crisis. Wear a mask, observe social distance, and keep our Union County family safe. I'd also like to, on the behalf of all the commissioners, extend our warmest congratulations to President Joe Biden and Vice President Kamala Harris on their inauguration into office yesterday afternoon. We look forward to working with this new administration on the matters of concern to Union County residents. Chief among these concerns is getting our residents vaccinated during this COVID-19 outbreak as quickly as possible. We're hearing from our residents, especially seniors and residents without a computer, and we sympathize with all those trying to get an appointment for a vaccine. The huge demand coupled with limited supply is resulting in few available appointments, and that's left a lot of people feeling frustrated. The state is only receiving 100,000 vaccinations per week. That's for more than 4 million New Jersey residents that are eligible for the vaccination. We also learned from a news report that the incoming Biden administration has discovered there are no current federal vaccination plan. There's no plan, which is another setback. Rest assured, we're doing our best to distribute the vaccines as quickly as possible once they become available, and we won't stop until all that want a vaccine will be vaccinated. So beginning next week, I'm pleased to announce we are launching a number of initiatives to increase vaccination outreach to underserved communities, seniors, and those who may lack access to the internet. First, we'll be launching a dedicated vaccination appointment center for our residents starting next week. A limited number of appointments will be available to those who do not have access to the internet through this phone number and call center. We will release that information, including a number for residents to call to the public on Tuesday, next Tuesday. In addition to our vaccination center at Kane in Union Township, we will be launching a mobile outreach next week, beginning in the city of Plainfield. This date will also be released soon, so look out for that information. We are working with the city of Elizabeth, which has a vaccination clinic set up at the Peters Town Community Center, and they're planning on eventually expanding their operations. So for now, if you're trying to make an appointment with the Union County's free COVID-19 vaccine program, please know that we are adding new appointments as soon as the supplies come in. Keep checking at ucnj.org/vaccine to get the latest updates. Finally, as a reminder, Union County Vaccine Program follows guidelines established by the State Department of Health. Currently, the program is open to all persons 65 and older, as well as first responders and persons 18 to 64 with certain medical conditions. If you don't have internet access, please call Union County's COVID-19 Call Center at 908-518-4307 for assistance. Turning now to other matters but related to the pandemic, we continue to offer free COVID-19 tests at our drive-up center at Kane University. We are also continuing to visit our local communities through the walk-up COVID test events for which no appointment is necessary. For locations, dates, and times, please visit ucnj.org/covid19. Our emergency medical events are continuing for distribution of food, and there are three coming up in the next several days. This Saturday, January 23rd, this will be at the Votek School on Raritan Road in Scotch Plains. On Tuesday, the 26th, we are coming to the Gerald Green Plaza, 200 West Second Street in Plainfield. And then we'll be in Roselle on Saturday, the 30th, at the Warrenankle Sports Center and Warrenankle Park. Please come by if you are in need of food assistance. Again, more detail is available at our website, ucnj.org. As we work to get the pandemic under control, we are also moving forward with other key programs to keep Union County moving forward. To cite a few examples, in the weeks and months ahead, we'll be updating you on the expansion of the Union County Regional Dispatch Center and our plans on the new fire training academy. We will also be rolling out a suite of inclusive programs for small businesses, entrepreneurs, employers, and job seekers with a focus on the LGBTQ+ community. For more detail on these programs and all our Union County Rising Initiatives for 2021, please visit the Board of Commissioners page on the Union County website, ucnj.org. And now let's turn to the business of tonight's meeting. We will move for the approval of communications during tonight's regular meeting, so that will be coming in the next meeting. We'll move on to our directors and constitutional officers, and we will start with our Union County Clerk, Joanne Rujapi.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county clerk has two resolutions for your consideration tonight, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Joanne. And actually, we will use the raised hand if you have questions, so commissioners, you'll know that that's available as of spin last year. All right, Joanne, thank you. I don't see any questions. Thank you. Keep up the great work in your area.
You're welcome.
We will move on to the Board of Elections, and I see Administrator Dorado.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Board. Happy New Year and congratulations. The Office of the Board of Elections has eight resolutions on the agenda for your consideration this evening. I'd be very happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I see Commissioner Mueded.
Thank you, Chair. How are you, Nicole?
Well, hi.
Hi. Can you just go into a little more detail about number one, please?
So number one is a resolution for a not-to-exceed contract of $100,000 with ESNS. Election System and Software is the vendor for our vote tabulation system. So consumables would include the ballot cards that become the voter-verified paper audit trail, the result tapes that are used to print the zero proof and the results from the machines, and really any other external pieces of the machines that we need to maintain and purchase to keep the system running. So, but it is primarily ballot cards, which is the paper audit trail, and, you know, we'll see what happens in terms of how our elections will be administered, but we're preparing. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
God, I'm in the middle of a Zoom meeting. Okay, all right, I think we got that taken care of. All right, thank you, Commissioner Mueded. We'll move to Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Administrator Dorado, just, I'm figuring that you have these resolutions on because of the pandemic, and we don't, we're not sure how things are going to go for June, so as you say, you need to be ready for everything, right? And it's possible that some of this will not be needed, or what's your take on that?
That is correct. I am, these are our typical annual resolutions, and we are preparing in the event we, you know, have elections. So for example, our transportation services, what we saw in the primary and the general election was that we had consolidated locations. So while we weren't sending out all of our machines, we were sending out, you know, a quarter of our machines, so they still needed to be delivered and picked up. So there are still services that will need to be used. It's just a matter of the extent to which we'll be using these vendors.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Granados.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'm referencing to number four through six. I see that we're using transportation for electronic supplies, and I see different prices for each of the three vendors. How many, how many locations per vendor, and have we used them in the past before?
We, so we haven't used, Main Street Movers was the first year, last year was the first year that I've used them. Both University and Liberty are tried and true, and they have been working for the county for many, many years. So between Liberty and University, we split it just about half each. Liberty is also, we're preparing for the possibility that we're going to have to move our vote tabulation machines. Main Street Movers, number four, they only help us with our election supplies. They do not move voting machines. So it also depends on what their availability is up to election, you know, up to right before Election Day, because they do service other counties. So Liberty has a larger fleet, and they're typically able to work with us a little bit more.
And so Liberty, basically, what you're stating also is that the reason why they have a higher not-to-exceed amount is because they provide additional services than University, right?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner. Nicole, I have a, I don't see any other commissioners, but I have a question. So I guess the conventional wisdom is that the primary will be a mail-in primary, I guess, at least at this point where people are thinking. And perhaps the general election will be a, people can mail in, but people also can vote in person. At least that's, in my mind, what I'm thinking. I don't know if that is a question for you or a question for Joanne. Irregardless, I know last year this time, in January, we didn't know that the pandemic was going to hit us or hit us as hard as it actually did. But I know we had time to allocate and reallocate budget dollars to accommodate that additional costs. And are they, are they carrying over from 2020 to 2021? Have you incorporated that in some of your thinking and some of the contracts you're putting in place with that scenario of a mail-in and then a kind of a, maybe a mixture election in November? I just want to know your thoughts, at least at this time, so we could better understand what you're thinking.
Well, like, I believe that's more of a question for the governor. We are all waiting with abated breath to see, you know, what his thoughts on the matter are going to be. These are all not-to-exceed amounts, and the dollars will only be allocated as we use the contracts. So this is just, in the best-case scenario, we go back to, you know, a hybrid election where the, you know, he decides that the machines should be available and where machines should be available. Otherwise, the money's not expended. None of the monies are carried over from 2020. They're exclusively for this year.
Okay. Thank you, Nicole. I don't know, Joanne, if you have any insight as far as, you know, what the thinking is right now from where you sit in your department.
I've been advised, Mr. Chairman, that the governor is seriously considering the vote-by-mail election for the primary. It's pretty clear that we're not going to have 70 or 80% of our population vaccinated by the first week in June. That's not going to happen. And it could be a hybrid election, but I believe it's going to be primarily vote-by-mail, and the clerk's office has already decided to set up for that in terms of location and collation of ballots, which is a very large job, as you know. So we expect, I have no idea what's going to happen in November. Hopefully, it'll be in more normal situation.
Okay. All right. So I just want to make sure, it sounds like both of you, your respective areas are considering that possibility and accounting for it. So that's, that's good, and that's, that's our, I'm sure, my colleagues and my expectations that you're doing that, and obviously, it sounds like you are doing that, so that's good. Okay. Any other questions for Administrator Dorado? Nicole, I don't see anybody, but thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. All right, we'll move on to the Department of Economic Development and Deputy County Manager Wagner.
Good evening, commissioners. Oh, that sounds different, doesn't it? The Department of Economic Development has two resolutions for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry about that. Hi, Deputy County Manager. I have a question about number one regarding the emergency rental assistance for the benefit of the public. What is, generally speaking, if you have this turnaround time for someone contacting and filling out an application, getting verification, and then actually receiving that assistance?
This particular pot of money, we were just notified yesterday that we were being awarded. We had an option to either take the money ourselves and do our own program, or let it go to the state and let them distribute it. Obviously, we decided we wanted to do it ourselves. There are a lot of questions still remaining as to how we can actually use it. We do have that other program that's up and running right now using CD dollars. This particular tranche of money has to be spent by September. So we're evaluating whether we can kind of put the HUD dollars on hold and supplant these for now so that we can spend those. There, it seems like it's a little bit easier to spend these money. Money's a little bit less restrictions. So we literally just got the award. We have a couple of calls set up to talk about how we can use this and expand it and in what capacity. One of the really great things about this program is that not only can a tenant apply, but also a landlord can apply on behalf of a tenant that's in arrears as long as the tenant is income-eligible. So it has the potential to help a whole lot more people, because we are hearing from a lot of landlords that are having a really difficult time right now, because they have people that are not paying. Whether they can or they can't, they're not paying. So I think this actually has a lot of promise, but I would love to be able to give you a definitive answer, but I still have a lot of questions myself.
Okay, so I'll, I'll let it lie for now, and perhaps Director Anderson, when she comes up, can talk about that other assistance. But thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman. That's all I have for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Appreciate that. We'll move to Commissioner Hudak.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Director. The all-covered contract, could you just remind me, like, what the scope and services are for all-covered?
Absolutely. They provide 24/7 monitoring of all 90 of our servers. So if something were to go down overnight, they would notify us to get it back online. They provide regular updates to those servers. They also have a staff member that is here during normal work hours. So the person monitors the servers, but also basically acts as another IT professional for us. So if there's a need to repair something or go move some equipment around, that person also assists the IT staff with that. So it's really like an extra body in IT for us in addition to the 24/7 monitoring.
Right. And then the duration of this is for just this calendar year, so this is an annual agreement?
Yeah, this, there's one year on this contract. We did it through our CCP, and there is the ability to extend for 24 months if we so desire.
So this is year one?
This is year one. We've had them for seven years. This is just a new, a new contract for them.
And it's got the two one-year options. Gotcha. All right. Well, thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Hudak, thank you, and I'm glad you asked that question. So how many, how many firms bid through competitive contracting for this award? Do you know off the top of your head?
Yes, we had two bids. The other one came in over a million dollars for the same services, so it was, was not a heavy lift to award to all-covered.
Okay, yeah, I know. We know them, and they're, they're a good firm. Okay. All right, excellent. Thanks. Any other questions, commissioners? Doesn't look like it. Deputy County Manager, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the Department of Engineering, Public Works, and Facilities Management, and that's Director Graziano.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, commissioners. Welcome aboard. Commissioner Leon? I have 14 items on the agenda tonight for your consideration. I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Okay, let the commissioners take a look at the list.
Sure.
All right, Director, I don't see any questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, commissioners.
Yep, and we'll move to the Department of Finance, and that's Director Taylor.
Good evening. And the Board of County Commissioners, my case, the Department of Finance has three resolutions this evening for your consideration this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, fellow commissioners, if you have any questions, let me know by raising your hand. I see the vice chair is raising her, literally, her hand. Vice Chair.
Sorry, I couldn't get the other box popped out soon enough. Yeah, Director Taylor, just for the benefit of the public, and especially our residents, I guess, in Roselle, et cetera, can you just give a couple more details about the library project?
Absolutely. Through you, Chairman. In July of 2017, the New Jersey Legislature approved the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act, and the Borough of Roselle applied for the renovation and expansion of its existing library building in an amount not to exceed $11 million. The Borough was successful in receiving $5.5 million and is requesting through the Union County Improvement Authority to act as a conduit financer to finance the other $5.5 million. The Borough of Roselle would be the guarantor of these bonds. They would make all of the debt service payments. There would not be any obligation on the part of the county. The UCIA would only be serving as the conduit financer to effectuate the project and serve as the construction manager, and also handle the procurement process to handle the project. It is a short turnaround time that the state requires, and so the resolution before you this evening is essentially consent, allowing the commissioners to consent for the UCIA to undertake this project.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Chairman.
Vice Chair, I'm glad you asked that question. It's a good clarification. Thanks, thanks, Director. Anybody else for Director Taylor before we move on? I don't think so. Thanks, Director.
Thank you, sir.
We are going to move to the Department of Human Services, and that's Director Anderson.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. The Department of Human Services has six resolutions on, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I see Commissioner Leon.
Hello, everyone. I have a question on number four. I'm just wondering how many languages for interpretation services are being provided? How many, how many languages do you provide?
So the language line provides over 40 different languages?
Just wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question, Commissioner. That, actually, that line is used in a lot of communities in the courts for individuals who, you know, have different languages to be able to communicate directly with the judge or the prosecutor. So that's a good, universal-type contract that we have with this firm that helps people. So good, excellent question. All right, any, and that helps, I guess, Director Anderson, that would help you if you had clients that would come in and residents that need help that just have a language, different, different language skills than English, and they could be helped with, with that.
That is correct, Chairman. Especially this service is used through our Division of Social Services, and when someone comes in to fill out applications, Commissioner, it's very helpful that, to walk them through any application process, this, we can just pick up the language line and collect, connect the operator, and the social workers could work and interpret back and forth. So it's very important to have this service.
It might be interesting for the rest of the commissioners, at some point, Direct, you may not have this at your fingertips, to know how many of those languages were accessed through that, that language line and that, that service. So if you can share that more from a curiosity standpoint, but I don't think anybody on this call would be surprised that there's numerous languages spoken in Union County, and I'm glad we're accounting for that and people can get the service they need with whatever language that they speak. So that's really good.
I will be happy to share that report with you, but for social services, just the top three are Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Arabic.
Okay. I don't know if I would have picked those three, so that's great. Terrific. Any other questions for Director Anderson? All right, Director, thank you. We'll move on.
Thank you, Chair.
And representing Parks and Recreation is Mike Brennan today. Hello, Michael.
Good evening, commissioners. The Department of Parks and Recreation has three resolutions for your consideration.
Okay, I see Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chairman. In reference to number one, Mike, I see there are 60 applications reviewed. How many actually were approved?
There were 60 submitted, reviewed, and approved.
Okay, all 60. Okay, that's good. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Chairman.
Terrific. That heart grant is beautiful for us and very well utilized in the community. Okay, anybody else for Michael? I was hoping for more hard questions for him, but it doesn't look like it. All right, Mike, thanks a lot. Keep up the good work.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate you.
Good night.
We'll move to the Department of Public Safety and Director Moran.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. The Department of Public Safety only has one resolution for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Just as a side note, our dispatch center uses that language line also in the process of emergency call-taking. So it's really a valuable resource for public safety also.
Good. Yeah, not surprised. That's good. Okay, Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chairman. Not so much on this resolution, but just want to commend you and the entire COVID response team on your efforts. And I heard, I believe, yes, it was over 400 vaccinations being submitted to residents. I just want to thank you and your team for not only doing the COVID testing, but now also vaccination. And, you know, while we know not everybody can be happy because there's not enough vaccinations through the federal government, on the local level and the county level, we're doing our part in making sure that every test we do have, every COVID vaccination we do have, we're giving it to as many residents as possible. So thank you to that, Director.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, you know, it's certainly a team effort. It's not just people from public safety, but, you know, from parks and Thank you, Commissioner. And, you know, it's certainly a team effort. It's not just people from Public Safety, but, you know, from parks and facilities, other departments said, you know, make that happen. Tonight, we should surpass 300, 3,000 vaccinations, although we'd like it to be more. We're giving out what is provided us, provided to us.
You, the county staff, all our county medical workers, and I know Vicky and Jess too, definitely a great major part of the team. So I just want to thank you all for coming together and doing this effort for our residents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good, well-stated, Commissioner Granados. I also want to just add a quick thank you to President Repellet over at Kean University. He's been, from the beginning, since day one of his presidency, has really stepped in and, and kind of said to me, the County Manager, Director Moran, any of us Commissioners, whatever you need from Kean, they will be happy to help. And he's, they've stood up to that, and they've really provided us not only the space, but the support and the teamwork that we need to execute this plan. So thanks to the President. He's,
They've been very partners.
Great, great, great. All right. Anything else for Director Moran? Director, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the Office of the County Council and Bruce Bergen.
Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. County Council has eight resolutions tonight. The first five are just our yearly contracts for legal research, both in books and online. But I'll answer any questions that the Commissioners might have.
Any questions for County Council Bergen? All right, County Council, I do not see anybody. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, please note that I see Commissioner Garrettson has joined the meeting. So welcome, Commissioner.
Good evening, Chairman.
All right. And I know Commissioner Staten joined some time ago too. I know you noted that. All right, we have the Office of the County Manager. So I'll turn it over to County Manager Uben.
Thank you, Chairman. I have one item on tonight's agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, County Manager, I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, moving on to Commissioner-sponsored resolutions. I see we have a number of them here. Any questions or comments from any of the Commissioners on that? Looks pretty straightforward and well thought out by my fellow Commissioners. So we will move on and that will finish our agenda-setting meeting. So I will move, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Fielder Kowalski and a second by Fielder Mudet. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Commissioner Staten.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine Commissioners voting to adjourn.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Jimmy, I guess we can move right into the, the regular meeting. Is that right? Do you have any reason to have any delay?
That is correct. We can move right into the regular meeting.
Okay, so let's do that. I'll open up this meeting and call to order the Union County Board of County Commissioners Thursday, January 21st, 2021, regular meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Here.
Commissioner Granados.
Present.
Commissioner Hudak.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leon.
Present.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet.
Here.
Commissioner Staten.
Here.
Vice Chair Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Mirabella.
Present.
Chairman, you have nine Commissioners present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can you please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag?
Humbly, we ask God to give her peace and the love of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. While we're putting our video on, please read the Statement of Compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Yes, Chairman. The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated, Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for year 2021, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstances to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. May I have a motion to approve communications?
So moved.
Moved by the Vice Chair, seconded by Fielder Kowalski. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados. Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Commissioner Staten.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
And Chair Mirabella.
Aye.
Chair, you have nine votes in the affirmative.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of Thursday, December 3rd and Thursday, December 10th, 2020, agenda and regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by the Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Granados. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Commissioner Staten.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chair, you have nine votes in the affirmative on all minutes.
Very good. Thank you. Tonight, we have three ordinances for first reading. Clerk of the Board, please read the first ordinance by title.
Yes, Chairman. Ordinance number 822-2021, an ordinance authorizing the execution and acknowledgement and delivery by the County of Union of certain agreements in relation to county guaranteed lease revenue refunding bonds, Series 2021, Union County Family Court Building Project of the Union County Improvement Authority.
All right, thank you. I will call on Commissioner Hudak to move this ordinance. Need you off mute, Commissioner.
Sorry about that. Yes, Chairman, I move this ordinance for final reading and ask Clerk to post the same in accordance with the law.
Thank you, Commissioner Hudak. May I have a second, please? Seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman, for, for the record, just want to make note that this move is for a first reading and authorizing me to advertise, advertise the same in accordance with the law as the public hearing will be scheduled to be held on February 4th.
Okay, good. All right, please.
With that noted.
Yep.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Commissioner Staten.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine votes in the affirmative on the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Clerk Pelletieri, please read the second ordinance by title.
Ordinance number 823-2021, fixing the salaries of members of the Union County Board of Commissioners, County Manager, and Department Heads.
Okay, I'll call on Commissioner Hudak to move this ordinance.
Thank you, Chairman. And Mr. Clerk, I have my, my attachment properly open this time, so I won't deviate. I, I move ordinance number 823-2021 for first reading and authorize the Clerk of the Board to advertise same in accordance with the law. The public hearing will be scheduled to be held on February 4, 2021.
Okay, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Chairman. Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Commissioner Staten.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine votes in the affirmative for ordinance 822-2021.
Okay, I, I will note the freelance by Commissioner Hudak was actually very good effort. You just missed the February 4th, but nice work. Clerk Pelletieri, please read the third ordinance by title for us first reading.
Ordinance number 824-2021, an ordinance authorizing the guarantee by the County of Union, New Jersey, of payment of principal of and interest on the county guaranteed lease revenue refunding bonds, Series 2021, Union County Family Court Building Project of the Union County Improvement Authority, in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $48 million.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. I will again call on Fiscal Chair and Commissioner Hudak to move this ordinance.
Thank you, Chairman. I move ordinance 824-2021 for first reading and authorize the Clerk of the Board to advertise same in accordance with the law. Public hearing is scheduled for February 4, 2021.
Okay, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Granados. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Commissioner Staten.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine votes in the affirmative for the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm now going to ask for a motion to suspend the rules to allow for the joining of both the public comment on resolutions being offered for adoption and the public comment on any governmental issue that the member of the public may feel that's of concern to the residents of this county into one public comment section. So I will move that. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Granados. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Commissioner Staten.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella. I'm sorry, Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
That's nine votes in the affirmative to suspend the rules, Chairman.
All right, very good. The meeting is now open to the public to speak on resolutions being offered for adoption or any other matter. We will go in the order that people have signed up for, to make comment. Please note that there's a five-minute time limit that will display on the live screen indicating green. And at the four-minute mark, the timer will display the change to yellow, and then red, which means the comments are completed at the five-minute mark. Okay, Jim, please let us know who is first, and we'll open up the line for their comment.
Chairman, I have three individuals online. However, one has two names listed, and we'll lead with them. Mary Ann and Charles Laskowski.
Okay, the floor is now open. If you have questions, Mary Ann or Charles.
They are on via phone.
Okay.
Good evening. We don't have questions. We want to sit and hear what happens here.
Okay, very good. Well, please continue to listen in, and thank you for, for being a part of our Commissioner meeting. Mr. Clerk, who is next on the list?
The next individual is Andrea Crowley Hughes.
Okay, Andrea, the floor is yours if you have a question or a comment.
Oh, thank you so much. I don't have a comment. I'm here covering the meeting for, tap into.
Very good. Thank you. I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're here. Mr. Clerk, who is next?
The third and final individual in our queue is a Mr. Charles Welton.
Welton.
Good evening.
Hi.
How are you Commissioners? It's nice to see you since you've transformed to Commissioners.
Thank you. Yes, I think we're all doing very well. Thank you for that.
So I was interested in the master plan for the Parks Department that the Parks Department is seeking input on, and I'm wondering what, what steps the Parks Department will be taking to gather comments and from the public, whether there will be charrettes or, you know, just open meetings. And I understand that CME is the engineering department, the engineering company that's been hired to do this, and I'm wondering if, if they have a plan for that. I'm also wondering what the, what the timeframe is. The flyer that was sent out was, says that they're soliciting, you know, input from the public, but it doesn't give a deadline date, and it doesn't give any information about the process. And I'm wondering if you could tell me what the process is and how we can contribute. Also, I know that the, you know, that, that, that people are allowed to send in their suggestions, but if, just wondering if there will be any public discussion of the different suggestions. We have wonderful, wonderful parks and, and I just want to see them developed in a way that the community wants and is sustainable and, you know, it does things like improve our trails in our parks and eradicates invasive species and that sort of thing. So that's, that's, that's what I'm asking. Thank you. That's, that's my, that's my comment or my question.
Okay, terrific. And, and Mr. Welton, thanks for that question. I'm glad that you're interested in the Parks Master Plan. As you know, sounds like you do, that there's a, we put this master plan in place to, specifically to solicit ideas from the public to understand the needs and wants in the community. And so you, so you're right, there will be a public portion and a public input component of that. And that sets the roadmap for, you know, future projects that this Board of Commissioners will want to respond directly to the needs and wants of the community. I don't know if Mike Brennan, who's on the line representing Parks, has any additional information about the specific channel for communication or any update on the timelines? Michael, that would be helpful if you had that information. If not, then we can make sure we are publicizing it out for the public so it's clear and everybody knows what to do.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The, the Parks Department always in, when we do master plans, seeks public input through a variety of ways, you know, in-person interviews as well as online surveys, and we do bring in various groups who have interest in the park. So we don't have specifics on that yet. However, we always involve the public and will continue to do so once this master plan, once we've come up with all those interest groups.
Mike, do you have any idea when that process is going to start? I understand it's in the, you know, the early parts of planning and getting ready for the, to do the analysis and gather the feedback. Do you have any ideas? Is it a springtime start, take just a loose timeframe for, for the Commissioners as well as the public to understand?
No hard dates yet, but yeah, we just started talking about getting things together. So we'll probably, early spring, you know, have something concrete to, to update for the Commissioners and for the public.
Okay. Well, Mr. Welton, I advise you to keep close to the website, ucnj.org. I'm sure we'll be posting some information on that site when the process is due to start. sure we'll be posting some information on that site when the process is due to start. And please do follow up with us because it's certainly residents like you that care about providing input that we want to hear from. And I hope you'll keep in touch and we'll try to get you some information when that process starts and just the avenues for that. So thank you for that. All right, Mr. Clerk, I think that's all our public commentary.
Chairman, that is correct. I did receive requests for access, which I gave, but there are no other individuals that have registered for this evening's meetings.
Okay. All right. So at this point, I will formally close this portion of the meeting and we will move on to adopt adoption of resolutions. So I'll ask for a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty one sixty six through twenty twenty one one twenty five.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Houdak and seconded by Commissioner Mueded. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Houdak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mueded.
Aye.
Commissioner Staton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine votes in the affirmative on all resolutions.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioners. We will move on right now to Commissioner reports and comments. And then we will have a need to go into an executive session, which we will go to after our reports and comments. And I'm just going to go in my order here that I have. It's kind of like a potluck order of Commissioners. But I will start with Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to add to Commissioner Granados's comments with respect to the vaccine and to the COVID testing. My thanks to all of the many staff members and directors who are involved in this. It's really been a huge effort by all of our Union County community, of course, led by the County Manager and Deputy County Manager. I know there's been some challenges and we'll iron out the communication for doing some of this registration by telephone soon. And I look forward to getting many more people tested and vaccinated here in the county. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mueded.
Thank you, Chair. I will echo the sentiments of both Commissioners in thanking everyone for their hard work in making our facility run. And I know that there is a lot of frustration amongst residents all throughout New Jersey because everyone, there is such a great need to get vaccinated and a desire to do so. But I do know from I've received some emails from people and my mom is actually one of the volunteer nurses administering the vaccine. And they have heard not they have praised the actual site so greatly. They my mom has heard nothing but praise from individuals that has said it's just such a smooth process once they get in the door and they were just really impressed with with the county. So I want to commend everyone that is working hard there and know that the residents do appreciate our efforts. So I want to just continue to remind residents to please stay safe, please social distance, wear your masks. There is a light at the end of the tunnel here and and we just want to see everyone through healthy. So with that, I conclude my comments. Oh, and it's my son Nicholas's birthday today, so I want to wish him a happy birthday because I think he's walking.
Happy birthday, Nicholas. Great.
Thank you.
Beautiful. And Commissioner, thank you, Mom, for her efforts there, too. She's doing a terrific job over there. It's nice to to see her out volunteering as a nurse. It's beautiful. So thank you. Thank her. All right, we'll move to Commissioner Staton.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. I'll keep my comments brief. My sentiments are the same as my colleagues, so I won't repeat. Obviously, we know in Union County, food insecurities, vaccines, and COVID testing is part of our daily lives. We all are working hard to bring all to meet the needs of all of our residents. I also would like to say congratulations to the Biden administration. The country was just so happy yesterday. Social media was beaming. So I'm wearing my pearls to represent my first Madam Vice President. And thank you, guys, for coming out. That's it. Thank you so much, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will move to Commissioner Lyon.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank the county for the exemplary job that they're doing with the vaccinations. I was there today as a matter of fact. But not to get off topic, I just want to say that we made history yesterday by electing the first woman vice president of our our country has sent a very clear message that women are allowed to dream with lots of motivation and ambition. The road for women has been very hard and long, but we're getting there. And I'm just excited about yesterday. Anyway, looking forward to the next four years of this new presidency. And I want to thank all the voters for choosing me to represent them in Union County. And I'm looking forward to the next three years to work closely with the Union County family because you guys are my family and I love you all. You have been so great in teaching me and showing me the way here. And I'm ready. I'm ready to help the residents and I want to thank you all. And, you know, congratulations to Vice President Biden and Vice President Kamala Harris. So Andrea, are you wearing your chucks or just the pearls?
That's great. Okay, Commissioner, thank you for those comments. And you're off to a good start. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Good. And we'll move to Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes. Give me one second. I'm sorry. So the pull-up might. Can you just pass? Can you come back to me in one second? I'm sorry.
Sure, of course. Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to thank once again our entire team that's part of the Code Response Team and can mention their mom, but also want to recognize their father, too, who I heard was helping residents to find the entrance for our vaccination center. So I got a couple of phone calls saying, you know, Mr. Palmieri was here helping me out. He showed me where was that. I definitely want to give a special shout out also in reference to the vaccination site. But definitely is a team effort, you know, when it comes to Eder County Manager Amy, you know, Director Moran and the JESS, Vicky, and most importantly, too, our nurses, medical staff, you know, our different members of the Code Response Team, they truly are going above and beyond. And truly, you know, when we got to start the vaccination program, they hit the ground running. And we continue to thank them for their leadership. They make us look good on this commissioner board, and it's because of their hard efforts and their hard work. And while we know not everybody is happy right now because everybody wants vaccinations, you know, we know that our employees and our volunteers are doing everything they can to make sure every single person who wants to get vaccinated gets vaccinated. So please stay patient. You know, we're waiting from the federal down to make sure they get us vaccines. So we're doing everything we can on our end to make sure we help out our residents. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Houdak.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to pile on to some of the comments that were made in regard to the vaccination clinic. And, you know, the the county, from the administration on down, it's such a high bar when we talk about, you know, food, grants, testing, you know, just the ingenuity is probably the word that that comes to mind of our staff in terms of bringing these services to residents and talking to other, you know, elected officials from around the state. I know the reputation of the programs that the administration is putting out there. So kudos. And I took my my seventy-five-year-old mother-in-law there, who's a cancer survivor, who's not been able to get out of the house for her first shot yesterday. And it was an extraordinarily efficient system, very professional, good to see many familiar faces who are who have stepped into these new roles and doing a great job. So just an amazing job and we can't say it enough. The second thing is, I, you know, I wanted to just bring attention to a resolution that was on the Free Hold Response Resolutions. I received the text message on Saturday evening, and I know I'm not alone in this. Comcast services most of the communities in Union County. And in many of those communities, there is not a meaningful choice, you know, where maybe FiOS isn't an option, there is not a meaningful choice for broadband service. As quick as elected officials were to praise companies like Xfinity at the beginning of the pandemic for making their services available to residents at no charge, it's somewhat unconscionable that they would begin to cap broadband service in the communities that they service and then apply a charge to going over a certain data cap. And this is really, let's be honest, just a response to the number of individuals who are cutting the cord, so to speak, moving away from traditional cable platforms. And frankly, when you have families where you may have one or two people working from home, multiple children learning from home, that 1.2 terabyte cap, which is not something that is advertised to residents, is is something that many people are going to be impacted by. I was talking to the county manager about it over the weekend and he said, hey, I got one of those emails, too. You know, I, you know, I didn't know what that was about. I've reached out to Senator Skatari, who who made it known that this was an unacceptable move by the cable company. And I know other members of the New Jersey Legislature are going to be taking up this issue. So something that we should be vigilant of as consumers, but also just a really bad job by a large company at a time where this, you know, for families who have this service, which is basically everyone at this moment because you really can't live without internet in your house, you could be subject up to charges up to a hundred dollars per month, or you have to guarantee a monthly fee. And that's really the wrong thing for a large Fortune 500 company, which is raking in the money during a pandemic where basically everyone has to stay home and use cable. Just a lousy thing to do. So something to keep an eye on and hopefully the company reconsider its position. But if you have the choice, I'm aware that currently Optimum Online does not charge in Elizabeth and FiOS doesn't. So as consumers, if we have the options, we should certainly take advantage of it and remind companies that are not doing the right thing that that they should take our business seriously. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thanks for educating the public of this board on that topic. Perhaps there's a resolution that we can put together voicing our concerns or.
Oh, it was on the agenda. It was on the agenda tonight, Chairman.
Okay, good. Excellent. Well, thanks for bringing that up. Appreciate you. Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes, I'm ready. I'm sorry about that, Chairman. So good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our commissioner meeting. It sounds wonderful as we hear this term. I think it's truly fitting. It was a dark day in our country when the riots happened at the Capitol. It was one of the most gloomiest days that I had to watch television and see what was going on. But it did not overshadow what an amazing day we had yesterday for the inauguration day. I think we were all just pleasantly just startled by the beautiful words that came from Amanda Gorman. She is just such an amazing young graduate from Harvard University. But not only that, I think that everyone can truly appreciate that she was motivated that night to finish her poem after she saw that horrific day. So out of the darkness comes light. I also want to share a statement that I actually put out. It's on my commissioner page, my commissioner page on Facebook. I took time just to, you know, put my thoughts together about what yesterday meant to me. So I just wanted to read that quickly. In my statement, it reads as follows, "Every inauguration day is a celebration of our enduring democracy, and yesterday reflected that uniquely American tradition. President Joe Biden and Vice President Kamala Harris have taken the reins in a historic changing of the guard after four painstaking years," excuse me, painstaking years, because it was very horrific. "We now have leaders in the White House who will serve understanding the voices of Black and Brown communities, made an indelible mark on their success. And as a result, together, we can all continue to strive for dignity, for honor, and for respect throughout our countries and throughout our communities." So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew I did take a little bit of time just to reflect on what yesterday meant to me. And as I think about moving forward, I know that January went very quickly, very swiftly. We had a wonderful beginning of the week with Martin Luther King and just remembering days of service. So I, like everyone else, was able to participate or to watch so many very important words, not just because of what Martin Luther King does, but what his memory, what what the legacy means. So I'm excited to continue that legacy with so many good folks. There were so many great programs. So if you didn't get a chance, there are all so many online that were done in Union County. So kudos to that. And finally, I want to say, as we begin January and MLK Week, we have a lot of students going back to college. So please be safe in your travels. I know there's a lot of different things that you have to start this new semester, but I just want to wish you well. I want to wish all the families well because you have to also equally help your children get back into school. But Union County, we are here for you. We've been doing a number of things. We've heard so many of the great work, the things that we're doing. But, you know, everybody, please take heed that we have come through January, we've come through an old administration with our former president, but also we have so many great things ahead. So I look forward to the work of the federal government and how we as a county will be able to work with them. So have a great evening and thank you so much, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Well, well stated. Appreciate that. Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I have a few comments. First, I would like to really commend our largest department here at the county, our Department of Human Services, under Director Debbie Ann Anderson. They have, as you all know, extended the Code Blue through Sunday because of our weather and have alerted all of our agencies regarding ensuring that there are places for our population who is currently experiencing homelessness. So I just want to give them thanks for the good job that they are continuing to do during this difficult time and especially in the the cold weather. We always have to remain mindful of of those who are suffering physically for lack of housing and permanent housing. I also wanted to say that, you know, echoing my colleagues here, it was a wonderful event yesterday. And for me, in addition, you know, it was just seeing so many women of color in particular on the dais yesterday, performing and celebrating and swearing in. Who would have thought that we would see two Puerto Rican women from the Bronx on that dais, right? But we saw Justice Sotomayor swearing in, our new Vice President Kamala Harris, and we saw a number of musical performers. Commissioner Garrettson highlighted Amanda, well, our poet laureate Amanda Gorman, which was also quite terrific. So it really was an historic day. And I feel that, you know, as opposed to the the years in the past, which we can, you know, still have to deal with, that I think that we're on track for VP Harris to really be a consequential vice president, just as President Biden was under the Obama administration. So I'm really overjoyed at that. Just another couple of things. The, over the weekend, I was honored, actually on Monday, I was honored to represent our county commissioners at an MLK event sponsored by City of Raway and the Raway branch of the NAACP led by Quone Palmer Chambliss. It was a wonderful event, and I really wanted to go because it was, you know, the only live event versus all the virtual events. And it was a wonderful, wonderful ceremony. Pastor Robinson and Guest Pastor Barry Wise spoke and and provided great words of encouragement in their impassioned speeches. And a lot of the community. And a lot of the community in Raway, including Council President Danny Newberry, she was also present, along with Mayor Jacoby, and it was just a wonderful event. And I was, you know, just so gratified to be there, you know, right before we experienced the history that was also made on, yesterday, on inauguration day. So I thought I had something else to say, but I can't find it. So I just suffice to say that, like Commissioner Garrettson, like all of you, I look forward to the coming days, and I really do think that the Biden Administration, by tackling the pandemic and all the related issues to it, I think that they will help see us through some of these very dark days that we know will occur. So thank you, Chairman, and I hope everyone has a good couple of weeks until we see you again. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to do one quick shout-out, too. We have a trifecta of birthdays next Wednesday, January 27th, my sister's birthday, but more importantly, in our county, we have Commissioner Andrea Staton, and we have Deputy County Manager Amy Wagner. So say happy birthday to them, please. Sorry.
Great. Happy birthday, all. That's wonderful. Beautiful. Thanks, yeah.
Are we singing?
With birthday news. That's good. Terrific.
Thank you, Chairman.
No, no, very good, very good. And thanks, Vice Chair, for representing the board. I saw the pictures of the event. Looked like a wonderful event, and you did a terrific job. And Raway's a wonderful community. I'm not surprised you had something in person. That's beautiful. I was able to participate in a virtual MLK event, which was on Monday, obviously, in the combined communities of Scotch Plains and Fanwood. And, you know, I'm just, I continue to be really happy that we're able to have these virtual events and have them be meaningful. I mean, this celebration of Martin Luther King Day was very meaningful, and people find a way to gather remotely or virtually. And I was very impressed with the group in these communities that put that event together and then encouraged people to go out and do some good in the community, whether it's drop-off food at food pantries or do some of those things. My wife and I actually had a chance to make a food donation up in New Providence, and they did a nice job up there collecting food for people in need. I do want to just mention, just quickly, you know, the terrible visions that we all had last week where our democracy was threatened and encouraged by a former, thankfully, former President Trump. And I only want to refer to him as a former. I don't think I've ever used President Trump in the same sentence, but former President Trump sounds more palatable for me. Certainly encouraged the terrorists who tried to stop democracy and stop the process of validating the election. And certainly, they challenged our democracy. And thankfully, we rose above that as a country. And I'm really proud of the officials in Washington DC and in the administration, the incoming administration, for not being shaken on what was a horrific day. The scenes, I don't think will ever leave my memory. But the fact that we overcame that and the presidential inauguration was held on the steps that were intruded upon was a real bold statement for the world that we're not going to put up with any threats to our democracy, domestic terrorism included. Yeah, and I was just delighted yesterday to see President Biden and Vice President Harris sworn in. It's, I feel like the weight of the world's been lifted off my shoulders, and I think a lot of us feel that way, knowing that we have a stable, competent administration at the federal level. And, you know, people sometimes don't understand what that means to a township or a county like ours in Union County. It means a lot. If there was a federally mandated mask program, we'd be in better shape today. If there was a coordinated effort to combat this COVID mess, if there was a better strategy federally to distribute vaccines, we would be in better shape, less people would have died. So it means a lot. And I think as many of us, certainly in Union County, are just encouraged by the, you know, the fact that we have, you know, news briefings and truthfulness coming from our administration. I mean, these are all things that are important. And I think I just wanted to take two seconds to mention that, that, you know, we bent, but we didn't break, and I think that's a good message for us. Okay, so I think we're going to have a need for an executive session. So after we vote on this executive session, we will end the meeting and enter into another Zoom meeting to conduct the executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the board will return to vote from the executive session and vote to adjourn the meeting. If anyone wishes to view these actions, they can do so by watching the livestream on the county's website and Facebook page. County Council Bergen, please make your statement relative to tonight's executive session.
Thank you, Chairman. Pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public body may enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing certain enumerated subjects. This board now wishes to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing attorney-client privileged discussions concerning the litigation matters of Cherry versus County of Union and Melgar versus County of Union. The minutes of the executive session shall be separated from the minutes of the open public session. The minutes of the executive session, redacted as appropriate and necessary, shall be available in approximately 30 days. The clerk to the board shall retain the original minutes until such time as the confidential limitations have been removed, at which time they shall be made available. Upon the affirmative vote of a majority of the members present, the board may retire to executive session. Upon the board's return, it may or may not take formal action on the matters discussed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. County Council Bergen may have a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by the Vice Chair and seconded by Commissioner Hudak. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Yes, Chairman. Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lyon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudead?
Aye.
Commissioner Staton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine votes in the affirmative to enter executive session.
All right, very good. So we're going to shut this meeting down, Commissioners and team, and we will call into the executive session Zoom. Thanks. Okay, may I have a motion to return from executive session?
So moved.
So Commissioner Mudead motioned, and Commissioner Kowalski second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Chairman. Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lyon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudead?
Aye.
Commissioner Staton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, that's nine votes in the affirmative to return from executive session.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. And County Manager Bergen, I guess, is there any action to take right now?
No, Chairman, there is no action to be taken by the board at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, County Council. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by the Vice Chair, second. Second, Commissioner Staton. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lyon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudead?
Aye.
Commissioner Staton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, there are nine votes. We are adjourned.
All right, thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.